Board of Independent School District 624, would the clerk please call the roll?
Kimball?
Here.
Collin?
Here.
Newberg?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilton?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Fahy here.
And would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
And we have before us an agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we also have in front of us a consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items which are normally before the school board on a routine basis, on a routine monthly basis, including some financial matters, some HR matters, but we also have the benefit of, I think every month, I've been on the school board for nine and a half years, of having a resolution to accept gifts on the consent agenda as well. This month is no exception. We have a number of gifts to the school district on this resolution. Many of them are donations to support our senior program from individuals. We also have evidence of the continued generosity of both the White Bear Lake Lions Club and the Vadnus Heights Lions Club. We have large donations from both of those organizations to support the Meals on Wheels program with which the school district operates in conjunction with other entities. And we also have very large donations from each of these Lions Club to support the work of the Lion Mobile. Having said that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball, and this calls for a roll call vote.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Now is the time for public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the school board on any issues of interest or concern to them. We do ask people who want to address the school board to pick up a card on the table against the wall, fill it out, and deliver it up here to the board table. I don't see any cards before us. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the school board tonight? All right, seeing no one, we will turn to our first and only information item, item C1, and that is the superintendent's report. Dr. Lovett.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm missing our student representative here. Usually I have, I share this presentation with our student representative. Hopefully by next month, we'll have our student representatives for the 16, 17 year school year. Well, we've been seeing our community, including our board members and members of our leadership team, have been out at Market Fest on Thursday night. It will continue through June 28th in downtown White Bear Lake. It's a wonderful opportunity to connect with our community. I can't say enough about it. We'd encourage anybody who's watching to consider just stopping by, and you can either get a pencil free, or you can get a quiz question and earn your pencil. There's a great deal of literature, too, and within another week or two, we'll be having folks ask for the school supply list. So, that's Market Fest. I want to acknowledge our communications staff and everybody who's helped on our communication products. Here's some recent awards that we've received. The National School Public Relations Association gave us honorable mention for an article called Room at the Table and our 62.4-second weekly update videos. I know a lot of you have really enjoyed those. We received the Award of Merit for Digital Access Initiative video, one of the videos that Stephanie put together, and our personalized welcome to kindergarten. You may recall that from January, so that each kindergarten student received a personalized video. We also received this year two awards of excellence. The top award, our annual report, which our families received last month, received one of nine awards of excellence in the United States for an annual report. And our activities calendar, popular in every home in the community, was one of six awards of excellence in the United States. So, really special recognition. We also received the Silver Award for Room at the Table from the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators' Northern Lights Award Program in May. And I know Stephanie is in the audience this evening, and just want to acknowledge all of your work this evening. Summertime activities in the buildings, some folks make the assumption that the schools are quiet during the summer, but if you get close, yes, we have a couple of schools that are having re-roofing, but summer school and extended day programs are going on in many of our buildings. Sports camps, art lessons, and enrichment classes are also taking place in the district. Couple of weeks ago, I stopped by Central, here just down the hall from where we are, and I had students take me around the Flex program. We have about 90 students there who are really planning their own day and having a wonderful time, from entering sixth graders through eighth graders. It was really fun to see their imaginations and the creativity and how much they were doing. I also want to acknowledge our building operations crew. Dan Roser is with us, hard at work landscaping, roofing, and other special projects. I want to pay a special acknowledgement to the new look in front of this building with the flowers that our landscape crew has put in. It really looks nice, and I want to acknowledge the work of all the landscape crew. At Central, new lockers, south campus, the gymnasium floor is being replaced, and if you follow Tim Herman on Twitter, you can get regular updates on how that's coming. A project that is of particular interest to some community members because they told us in the spring, is that the resurfacing of the tennis courts at Sunrise Park will be done soon, and we will have pickleball lines added, which may be of special interest to some of our board members. That's the report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lovett. Right, we have no discussion items for this evening, so we'll turn to our first operational item, E1, and that's action on the Student Transportation Services Agreement with First Student. Welcome, Dr. Kazmercheck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have had a few different occasions to talk about transportation contracts in the last few months, and included some time at a work-study session a couple of months ago. At our last regular board meeting, we approved our type III transportation contracts, and we weren't quite ready to present the First Student Agreement at that board meeting. They were still reviewing it at that point, but we have wrapped that up, and so we're asking you to approve that tonight. Couple of highlights on that, we are contracting for 25 routes for the upcoming school year. That compares to 33 contracted routes for the past school year, which means we're taking on more of the work as we've talked about previously. Our rate increases up to $318 per day, up from 301. Year two of our agreement calls for a 2.75% increase, and then there is an option for two additional years at rate increases of 2.5%. I've got Mr. Tom Watson here and Mr. Mike Torito here. Come on up, gentlemen. If there are questions that you may have, we would be happy to answer those, so.
We'll first get a motion on the table. We have a recommendation that we approve the agreement with First Student, Inc., for Student Transportation Services for two years, commencing August 1, 2016, and ending July 31, 2018, with an option to extend for an additional two years, consistent with Minnesota statutes, Section 123B, .52, subdivisions 1 and 3. Is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion by Ms. Fahy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Kazmercheck, Mr. Watson, or Mr. Torito? Mr. Mullen?
Gentlemen, thank you for your work on this, first of all. I just have a quick question. So, roughly, we'll have 33 routes, or they'll be doing 25 routes this next year? Does this agreement give us the flexibility to decrease their routes that they're going to do and increase ours, or is it?
Good evening. For the record, I'm Tom Watson. The answer is yes. We had a provision in your RFP that is a section called Program Growth, and it allows us to increase or decrease at the established rates in the contract.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? And I know we had an opportunity to discuss this at our work study. Mr. Chapman?
One thing I noticed with respect to the, and maybe I'm missing it somewhere, in terms of the draft contract, I'm not seeing any insurance requirement of First Student. Am I missing it somewhere, or, because typically when you've got a vendor relationship, there's, as you know, there is some type of insurance requirement.
There is. The contract on page 2, Section 5, repeats the insurance provision that's in the RFP as well, and so we basically have a basic million-dollar coverage on all basic coverage, and we've got a $2 million rider for excess liability built in there. Keep in mind, as a state agency now, with respect to a contractor, you have tort limit law protection as well, so that provides an added benefit. So, a lot of these companies, First Student, for example, carries excess liability policies of $10 million.
Okay.
I might just say, one of the things that, because you won't have to put up with me for another period of time, probably, as a result of what Wayne put up here, we originally started off looking at the possibility that you were going to have probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a 10% increase in cost. By pulling these rates in-house, and assuming that you were handling fuel, because you obviously buy fuel for your existing equipment, the estimated cost right now, if fuel were to stay even within 50 cents of a gallon where it is today, your estimated cost over the next two years will average probably about 2.57, 2.6%. So, if you looked at that $17 increase on the basis of 300, it looks like about 6%. The effect of pulling it in-house, using equipment that you had in inventory, means your average increase is going to be about 2.5%.
Good. Any other questions for our presenters? All right, seeing none, this calls for a roll call vote.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
And the resolution carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll turn to item E2 on the agenda, and that's action on the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Dr. Kazmercheck.
I thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. All right, on page 89 of your board packet, it begins an agenda item. This is an annual approval item. The Department of Education requires each district to submit a 10-year planning document for facilities, and our detailed document is on page 93 of your board packet. And Mr. Roser is here, if maybe you want to come up in case there are questions as we go through. But what we have here is a 10-year plan with a great deal more specificity in the early years than in the out-years, our placeholders. And as we discussed earlier today with our financial advisors on the revenue, when we were discussing revenue, what we have done as a school district is we have actually issued bonds to pay for our long-term facilities maintenance needs, previously called alt-facilities needs, but our long-term facilities maintenance. And our goal is to move towards a pay-as-you-go method, and what that would mean is that annually we'd have a levy amount, and we're targeting about the $3.5 million range that would then meet our needs on an ongoing basis. And then if there was something very unusual that would come up, we would deal with that differently. But $3.5 million is where we've landed as an amount that we would work towards over the next few years, actually. Because if you look at the document on page 93, you can see that for fiscal '17, we're set, as far as revenue goes, on fiscal '17. The discussion about bonding that we had today would be for fiscal '18, fiscal '19, and fiscal '20. And so, if you look, you see a $5 million indication for those three years over on the margin of those particular years. That's what that figure is. And I know there was discussion today about what we do and the timing of that, but generally, what we're recommending is that we do another $15 million issuance of bonds as we work towards shifting to a pay-as-you-go. And we talked about the debt structure today, and that we would be coming to you with a recommendation sometime this coming school year, potentially as early as this fall, about how we handle that. So, those are the detailed projects that we have in the works. The other documents are spreadsheets that the Department of Ed asks us to complete. So, essentially, on the expenditure spreadsheet from the Department of Ed, we just take our estimated, our planning document, and we plug in those figures. And then on the revenue side, a lot of that is pre-populated based on our debt payment schedule. And so, even the assumption that if we were to potentially issue additional bonds, we worked with Lers to develop the revenue schedule and work that into the document that goes to the Department of Ed. We're not locking in to, we're not committing to issuing $15 million in bonds right now, but that is where we're at in terms of, as we move forward and as we try to manage our debt and as we manage our tax rate, that's where we've landed at this point. So, with that, again, I would welcome any questions, but, yep.
We will get a motion on the table. First, we have a recommendation that we approve the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan as presented in our packet and by Dr. Kazmercheck. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any questions for Dr. Kazmercheck? We'll start with Mr. Kimball.
Yeah, and this question was probably asked at the work study, but I was absent for that part. So, in a nutshell, and for the benefit of the viewing audience, if we're going, the transition from bonding to pay-as-you-go, and then I know that part of the thing is to, you know, adequately fund the facilities while keeping tax levies at near the current level, I'm just trying to, what's the easy answer to how come our, you know, the levies aren't going down, or what's the, why the change? What's the big reason for why the change?
The big reason is to just move away from issuing debt in order to meet our needs. We don't need to issue debt to maintain our facilities. There is a different method, and there's a way to transition to that without having a significant tax impact. So, you know, rather than adding to our long-term debt, we would do an annual pay-as-you-go. The discussion today, if we were to not issue bonds, we would have very little revenue for the next three years, those three years I indicated, fiscal '18, fiscal '19, and fiscal '20. We'd have very little revenue to do facilities projects, and so that helps us bridge the gap to where we would have, be able to get by on that pay-as-you-go method.
We're going to transition this in?
Yeah, we're transitioning. It's a long-term, what we looked at today was our long-term debt and our levies, and as we develop that plan over the next decade or more, this is what we think is the best course of action in working with our financial advisors.
Mr. Mullen, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, I have actually two questions, if that's okay.
Of course.
The list, how did you guys come up with the list of projects that are needed to be done?
Yep, we've had, and Dan, you may want to help out here if I forget anything, but we have, fiscal '17 is a, some of it is a carryover from the work that we did with Holberg Engineering. So, we've worked with Holberg Engineering, we've worked with our internal staff, including Dan and Scott Larson. He's our expert on the HVAC systems, and actually primarily the HVAC recommendations are, we worked with Holberg Engineering on those. We've worked with principals to identify needs at buildings. So, we think we've had a pretty inclusive process to develop our list. Obviously, we have to make some decisions about priorities. For example, we, you know, we ended up holding off on the Sunrise HVAC improvements. They're in here. Let me see, fiscal '18, part of the thinking there was, number one, they came in way over what we thought they would come in at, and then, and number two, if there was going to be some discussion about facilities that might impact that site, there might be a way to accomplish that HVAC project through another more significant project. So, we bought a couple of years to have those conversations before we would move ahead with that particular project. But, and Dan, am I forgetting?
Secondary.
Secondary facilities work that we did a year ago. And, yeah, I think we've done a pretty good job of involving building administrators and discussing their facilities and trying to meet their needs. Yep.
And then can you just briefly just talk about some of the projects that would be consisted under the health and safety part?
Sure. Dan, you want to touch on the health and safety?
Sure. Health and safety, there's a lot of requirements, fire inspections, fire alarm maintenance, asbestos abatement, hazardous waste disposals, any kind of inspection that we're required to do, whether it's health inspections, lift inspections, you name it. We've got, I bet we have a dozen inspections that we're required by the state to do, and that's what we use health safety money for. Personal protective equipment for our science teachers, custodians, nurses, Sharps disposals, indoor air quality testing, items like that. There's a pretty wide range of things that health safety funds cover.
Through the chair, is there a list that's put out by the state, or is that?
Yes, there's a list that's only, is required, it's got to be in those categories to get approved by the state, yep. And it's restrictive, but then again, there's a lot of things covered under health safety. And I would guess 20% of the dollars is fire equipment-related, sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems, alarm monitoring, things like that.
Thank you.
I have a question. One of my two liaison schools is Central Middle School, and I know earlier this year, they had raised concerns about the adequacy of their band and choir space, and I think there had been an analysis of whether or not there had to be any structural changes or build-outs. Is that included at all? I see that carpeting the floor in the band room is included, but is there anything broader included about Central?
Making remodeling changes, we can't use these funds.
Okay.
But replacing carpet, things like that, replacing things that are there and just need replacing because of age or condition, we can use these funds, but remodeling, we can't.
Thank you for the clarification.
And we are preparing for the, the big concern was, will there be room for the orchestra?
Right.
And we're addressing that need here this summer. So, we are doing that, but not with these funds.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else with any questions for Mr. Roser or Dr. Kazmercheck? Yeah, Mr. Kimball?
Yep. Just because you're here, and I'm staring at a list, we don't always get that opportunity, but, so, I don't see the south campus floor on here. Was that some, or is it on here, and I'm not seeing it?
The gym floor, if it wasn't in '17, it was a 2016 project. So, we started in 2016, and we're just finishing up now. So, it's 2016 money. It was on the list.
I thought it just happened this past couple of months.
It started in June. That was fiscal '16.
Oh, gotcha. And then, on each one, it has like a half a million dollars for professional services and salaries. Is that just kind of a catch-all for things that could come up that aren't covered in the contract with the vendor that we have, or where does that typically?
Engineering fees, if we have Holberg or an architect involved in the project, those are part of that fees. Staff fees, part of my salaries in that category. I believe part of our electricians, our maintenance supervisors, so there's probably three or four district staff people where part of that money comes from, too.
So, they're funded on this sort of special line item?
They're funded out of that category, correct.
Any other questions for our presenters? All right, we have a motion and a second, and this calls for a roll call vote.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll turn to Agenda Item E3, and that's action on renewal of our membership in the Minnesota State High School League for 2016-2017. Dr. Lovett?
Madam Chair, this is forwarded by Mr. Herman, our activities director. The Minnesota High School League asked the board to annually, to act on this resolution for our membership.
Thank you. Well, we have a recommendation from administration that we approve once again our membership in the Minnesota State High School League for 2016 to 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
As our board liaison to the high school league, I will move to accept our membership.
We'll give that to Mr. Wilson, and a second from Mr. Mullen, if that's all right?
Yep.
Very good. Any questions for Dr. Lovett?
All right.
Let's do a roll call vote on this. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Action Item E4 is action on the recommendation to designate identified officials with authority as required by the Minnesota Department of Education. Dr. Lovett?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is an annual recommendation that is required by the board to give access to anyone other than the school superintendent for access to the Department of Education's secure websites. In this case, we're recommending that Sarah Paul, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and Wayne Kazmercheck, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, also have access to that secure website. In this case, both of them need to enter data in the areas of their responsibility, and this allows me to split up the responsibility a little bit. Otherwise, everything would have to be entered on my computer with me present and signed off by me. But this is an annual protocol that the Department of Education does for accountability and security.
Very good, thank you. We have a recommendation that we approve Sarah Paul, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Wayne Kazmercheck, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and Michael Lovett, Superintendent, as identified officials with authority as required by the Minnesota Department of Education. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mullen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Any questions for Dr. Lovett? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right, the motion carries. We'll turn to Action Item E5, and that is action on the school board meeting dates for 2016 to 2017. Dr. Lovett?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we ask the board annually at this meeting to act on the school year, school board meeting schedule, even though the schedule for the calendar year is already set at your January meeting. We do that so that we can incorporate the school board meetings and work-study sessions into our annual activities calendar, which will be published next month. The school board has regular school board meetings on the second Monday of the month, work-study sessions on the fourth Monday of the month, except in the months of December, June, and July, when we do not have a second meeting scheduled. This approval would allow these dates to be incorporated into the school activities calendar.
Right. And I see we do have a proposed oddball meeting in March, where our primary meeting would be on the first Monday in March to not conflict with spring break.
That is correct.
All right. So, we have a recommendation that we approve the 2016-2017 school board meeting dates as recommended. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Any additional questions for Dr. Lovett? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right, we'll turn to Action Item E6, and that is action on a tentative agreement for 2016 through 2019 with the School Nutrition Association. Ms. Gores, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Lovett. You have before you information for our food and nutrition employees. There are approximately 65 part-time and full-time employees in this group, and what you have before you is a recommendation to approve the tentative agreement that actually runs for '16, '17, '18, and '18, '19 for this group, and this group has ratified the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Gores. So, we have a recommendation that we approve the proposed 2016-2017, 2017-2018, and 2018-2019 master agreement with the School Nutrition Association, representing the food and nutrition employees of White Bear Lake area schools, by passing the following resolution, which will be read into the record by the clerk.
Whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on the 2016-17, and 2017-18, and the 2018-19 contract, whereas the group has ratified the contract, then be it hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves- resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2016 through 2019 agreement and authorizes the chair and clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board.
Right, we have a resolution, a proposed resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. Any questions for Ms. Gores? I know we had a briefing on this during our retreat and work-study meeting earlier today, but any additional questions for Ms. Gores? Right, this calls for a roll call vote. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
The resolution carries. Thank you, Ms. Gores. Action item E7 is on amendments to the agreement between Ramsey County and the White Bear Lake area schools for election services for 2017 to 2020. Dr. Lovett?
Madam Chair, members of the board, in 2013, after a great deal of study and looking at options, the school district recommended to the board, and was approved, that we contract with Ramsey County election officials to assume administration of the school district's elections. Prior to that time, our work was primarily with the White Bear, a city of White Bear Lake, but they basically got out of the business of doing that. We looked at the experience of other other school districts in the area in Ramsey County. We found they were very satisfied with the quality and service provided by Ramsey County, and we've completed that three-year contract. We're recommending another three-year contract with Ramsey County for election services from January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Lovett. We have a recommendation that we approve the amendment to the agreement between Ramsey County and the White Bear Lake area schools for election services from January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Chapman. Any questions for Dr. Lovett, or any discussion? Right, this calls for a roll call vote. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll turn to action item E8, which is action on a bid for the south campus stadium press box. Dr. Kasmercheck?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we're back considering a bid that we received back in April. So just to give a brief recap, the school board, you rejected the the bid at on the at the May 9th school board meeting. We had an opportunity to discuss the press box at on May 23rd at our work-study meeting. We had a very good discussion, and there were there were a lot of questions, but it really boiled down to a couple of of main concerns. The first was that we only received one bid in that initial, when we went through the bidding process. So there was some question if that if that when you receive one bid, you're not really quite certain if it's 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 fair or not. So that was one of the one of the issues that we talked about. And then also, we thought that perhaps the project could be done on-site rather than having the press box built off-site. But if you built it on-site, would that potentially help us save some money? And so we explored that idea as well. So now we're back here in July. We in in May and June, we we got an additional bid through the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, and that's a that's an organization out of Staples, Minnesota, that allows school districts to meet their their obligation for the competitive bidding process through the National Joint Powers Alliance. And we so we got a bid from a company that's associated with NJPA. And then we we worked with a local contractor and asked them to give us an estimate about what it would cost to actually do the project on-site. And so I included that on my slide. The original quote or bid, I'm sorry, from Seating and Athletic Facility Enterprises that we considered back in May was for $214,574. The bid we got from the NJPA firm of Dant Clayton Corporation was $219,300. And then the on-site construction estimate was well over $300,000. So so we're back tonight. Additionally, I should I should mention, you all took the time to go and check out the press box. And so you I think each of you did your due diligence in getting a better feel for the current state of that of the press box. And that occurred around in the same time period here in in May and June, I think primarily May, if I recall correctly. So having said all this, we're back recommending that we approve the bid with Seating and Athletic Facility Enterprises. They have agreed to match the price that they submitted back a couple of months ago. And if we're able to approve it this evening, they would anticipate being able to get that installed in November, this this coming November. If we were to wait any longer, then the likelihood is it would have to happen next next summer, just because we'd run into frost issues and and then spring activity. So we would have to wait. But because there is lead time in constructing the the press box, they would they would need to begin that work relatively soon in order to do a November installation. So.
Thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. We have a recommendation that we accept the bid for the south campus stadium press box replacement project submitted by Seating and Athletic Facility Enterprises in the amount of $214,574. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. Any questions for Dr. Kasmercheck? Yes, Mr. Wilson?
Hey, Dr. Kasmercheck, one more time, the low bid, the box will be constructed in Osakis?
In Osakis, Minnesota.
Okay. And then with the second bid, it would be, well, you said they're based out of Staples, but it's going to be constructed in Kentucky?
No, the the consortium is organized out of Staples, but so there are national firms that that come that
That one would be constructed in Kentucky.
That would be in Kentucky. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Kasmercheck? Yes, Mr. Mullen?
So on the, has there been an inspection down of the box? Does it have to be built now?
Does it have to be built now?
For safety reasons, is there any reason that would stop us from that would say that we had to put forth this structure now?
There, I think there are there are concerns about the structure. There are many. Safety-wise, I think there, you know, the biggest concern would probably be people on the roof. We have to shore up the railings for this fall. Is that what you're?
Yeah, I'm asking, is there a reason that we would have? Is there is there some safety concerns that are saying that this project has to be done now?
I suppose we wouldn't have to do it right now. We could wait, but I don't know what we gain by waiting. I would anticipate prices would increase the more we wait. I think you've all I think you've all seen the condition that it's in. I don't know that it's, again, safety-wise, yes, we could shore it up so that it wouldn't have to be done immediately. But ultimately, the recommendation is that we would go ahead and replace it.
But the follow-up, if I may, is is the has that cost been investigated, or have we put a cost to what it would cost to to shore up the railing to make it safe for people to be up there on the roof?
I don't have an estimate. I don't know if Dan has gotten an estimate on that, but.
That's something that we would explore. If the box didn't get approved tonight, we would explore. We'd probably have an engineer check out the roof. We're going to shore up the railings regardless, because we're going to use it for fall sports, and the boards that the railings are mounted in are noticeably rotten. So there's not a whole lot of support there. So if the board if it isn't approved tonight, we'll we'll put some money into it. But we were hoping not to put a whole lot of money into it, because it's pretty obvious it's on its last few years. So.
You know, if I may make a comment, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to visit the stadium box and tour it. I was pretty horrified by the amount of rot in the wood in that facility and the conditions under which we're requiring coaches and others to climb up this, which doesn't look to me to be a very safe ladder to get up onto the second floor of that press box. And in my mind, I'm I don't have a construction background, but in my mind, we need to replace that press box. Ms. Newmaster?
The one thing I noticed as we've gone through this thoroughly, as I read this, the funds are there, they're already, it's like looking at a list of things. This was on the list, and the funds are available. It says from previously issued long-term facility maintenance bonds. So it's the money is there to do it now, correct?
Yeah, the money is there. It's not a general fund expenditure. It's without getting into too much of the history on long-term facilities maintenance, White Bear Lake is one of 25 school districts in Minnesota that qualified for alternative facilities funding, which means that those they're large school districts in Minnesota that were able to address their facilities needs through this form of financing. All of the other school districts in Minnesota were able, they they got a much smaller amount of revenue called deferred maintenance revenue, and then and then the health and safety revenue also came into play. But White Bear Lake, for quite a few years now, has had access to alt facilities revenue to deal with facilities issues. So that's where this project would be paid for out of our our previously issued alt facilities bonds. It would not be a general fund expenditure.
Any additional questions for Dr. Kasmercheck? Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, thank you. And that was one of the points that I was going to try to make. It's not like we're, we would take these funds and put them into curriculum or a general fund payment. And it's 200,000 out of a $6 million long-term facilities maintenance plan. So it's not like, but I I think the point was and is that it stood out as something that just seemed to the general public, like, oh, my gosh, like, my house costs 150,000, and they're building a press box for 200,000. You know, some somebody who got a house a few years ago or whatever. But that's the the point to me, not not the press box itself. We're replacing lockers for $225,000. Well, you know, to your point, Don, they probably could use those lockers, but it's time to replace them. You know, I mean, you just have to replace things on a time on a on a schedule. The lockers probably aren't a safety concern. But I think from my perspective, and maybe from from at least some others, it's, you know, I think just a encouragement on our part to, you know, vet major expenses, especially those that might appear, even because to the general public who doesn't know what things cost. And as it turned out, there were a couple of options that didn't turn out to to be good. But we at least now have can feel that we've done our due diligence, is the word you use, and and that the public can have confidence that we are good stewards of the community's resources. So we just encourage that to happen all the time.
Thank you. Anyone else with, oh, Ms. Fahy?
I'd just like to thank you for the extra work and spending the time to get us over there and walk through, because I know I had walked around outside of it when I saw this on the agenda, but I hadn't seen the inside. And I hadn't seen that ladder that we're expecting people to climb up to the roof. I was really, really thinking that we would get something lower than the 214. I actually had my fingers crossed that we'd get something lower, but we didn't. So and I assume it's been on, it's in the 2017 list. It wasn't just put there, you know, three months ago. It's been planned.
Yeah, and it's been planned. You know, it predates both Dan and I arriving in White Bear. I think it's been talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chapman?
I appreciate all of the work that that you two and everybody has put in on this. I must say, I will, I cannot support this in good conscience. It, to me, is an awful lot of money, whether it was there or not. It's come taxpayer dollars. And I just have a hard time with the cost. If it had been a much lower cost, I I could support it or potentially support it. I don't see, what I tend to gauge things by is direct student impact. I don't see this in this particular case. I see where this box is used only maybe 20 times at most a year. It's adults that are that are going to benefit from this. I don't see, again, direct student benefit out of it. And as far as that ladder going up, I don't see why we need to allow people to go up there in the first place. I close the thing off, and and I don't know why that is such a much greater vantage point than standing on the top lecher. But anyway, that's that's my feel, and I'm going to be voting no.
Any other questions or comments for our presenters? All right, this calls for a roll call vote. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Nay.
Newberg?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Nay.
Fahy?
Aye.
Right, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Right, we'll turn to action item E9, which is a second reading of three board policies. These policies were before us last month for first reading. We all had a an extended opportunity to ask questions or consider them. They are now here for a vote for approval tonight. So I will entertain a motion to approve all three in one fell swoop. The policies are 102, equal educational opportunity, policy 413, harassment and violence, and policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Is there a motion to approve these policies?
I'm of approval.
Motion by Mr. Kimball. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Does anyone have any additional discussion or questions about these policies? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The policies are approved. We now turn to Board Forum, which is the opportunity for members of the board to share with each other and members of the viewing public. Any events coming up, events of significance or importance or interest in the in the community? Does anyone have anything for Board Forum tonight? Mr. Wilson?
It is not too soon to start looking at, and this is for all of us in attendance in the audience as well, but the White Bear Area Educational Foundation is hosting their fall fundraiser Friday, October 14th, at the North Oaks Country Club, basically seven or so in the evening until 10:00. And I would invite and encourage all that care to attend the event to do so. And, you know, start looking at your calendars and circle that date. Tickets are $75 apiece.
And I'm sure people who want more information can go to their website, which is wbaef.org.
That would be it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Does anyone else have something for Board Forum tonight? Mr. Kimball?
Yes, it's it's July eleventh.
Eleventh.
11th. 7/11. And it's middle summer, and and we have on in the board in the agenda for today, there were a number of new staff hired on. So they are told to watch the board meetings. So we're all welcoming you to White Bear Lake School District. And there are a couple retirements announced in this agenda, and we are saying goodbye to a retiring sixth grade teacher at Sunrise, who's been with us for 16 years. Thank you for your work. And a school nurse out of Onika and Hugo, 17 years with the district. So to both of you, well done, and we appreciate everything that you did. Number two, I want to wish my colleague to the left of me, to the right of the viewing audience, a happy birthday on July 12th. So once again, I think you may have caught up to me.
As I mentioned during our work-study meeting earlier, it's one of those big birthdays divisible by 10. And I'm not going to identify which one, but people can probably guess pretty easily. I'm the same age as him.
The big 4-0.
Look at me, his hair is all gray.
I know we don't look it. And then I just want to, again, go back to the earlier agenda item and acknowledge Stephanie and Marissa for amazing work. I mean, that is a national national recognition on a number of different communication projects and initiatives. And you guys just do, you and and others that support you, do such a great job, and that is a huge honor. We're so proud of you and our district. And if our district wasn't great, you wouldn't have great things to communicate. But I also think that I think that I heard the 62.4 was given honorable mention, and I really think we got robbed on that one. on that one.
[laughing]
Because that is so neat. It's just really well done, all the way around, audio, visual, timing, 62.4. So anyway, good job, and congratulations to the district and the communications department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kimball. Does anyone else have anything for board forum? Seeing, oh, one more?
Yeah. Regarding the, the item, and this goes back to the long-term facilities maintenance, guys, the, we're excited about the Sunrise resurfacing of the tennis courts, but if it's not too late, I don't know if you meant that all of the courts, we're going to have pickleball courts gone in. Well, yeah, that's not a big thumbs up for us tennis players. So I just-
Now, don't be dissing the pickleball players.
I want to just advocate that maybe leaving one or two, or talking to the tennis community, because it's kind of confusing to us when you have those, all those extra lines. But I, if it is in there, we'll, we'll manage.
Is that enough, Mr. Kimball?
Yes, that's all.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for board forum? Seeing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Did you second it?
Yeah.[1787.41][1787.41][laughing]